Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to re-adjourn the Menifee regularly scheduled Menifee City Council meeting for February 19th, 2013. Do we have a closed session report, City Attorney?
The council met in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A, and 54956.9D2, and 54956.9E3. To confer with legal counsel regarding the claim, it's noted on the agenda, there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Mayor Mann.
Here. Next on the agenda, invocation by Pastor Bob King of the Menifee Bible Church.
Please join me for prayer. Gracious God and Heavenly Father, we are thankful for these men and women whom you have placed in a position of leadership and responsibility in our city. We pray to your God that you will so direct them, not only in this meeting, but in every day of the outcaring of their duties, that you will so direct them that not the will of the people, but the good of the people will always be in the forefront of their minds and in the heart of their pursuit. And we'll praise and thank you for all you do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Councilmember August, would you lead us in a flag salute, please?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Ready to begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some presentations to give out tonight. If the council would join me up front as Mr. Johnson presents what we're going to talk about.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's going to be Mike Anderson, our Public Safety Coordinator.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and guests. Menifee's Office of Emergency Management is the lead department responsible for training our citizens to respond effectively during emergencies and disasters. Due to the high volume of trained volunteers within the city, a core group of up to 25 volunteers receive additional training to assist in rapid response, as well as managing the at-large volunteer corps. This additional training provides the technical and leadership attributes necessary to effectively respond to city emergencies.
Jude and Heather, step forward, please.
Come on up in here.
To Jude Hannah, having successfully completed over 300 hours of field and classroom training in accordance with the Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and the City of Menifee's Office of Emergency Management, you are hereby awarded your certificate of completion. Congratulations.
Can I push the button?
To Heather Slider and Cynthia Walker, who couldn't make it tonight, also having completed the same training of over 300 hours, your performance, dedication, and leadership attest to your ability and future potential to protect the lives and property of the citizens of Menifee, and are hereby promoted to the rank of Lieutenant.
300.
300 hours. That's an amazing testament to your dedication, and hopefully we can get more folks trained up like this in other areas of the city for our CERT teams and our HOA, the CERT teams and our HOAs, and entities such as that. Madam Clerk, what do we have next? The Boy Scouts?
Yes, sir. You have a proclamation honoring Boy Scout Month, and then, of course, Mr. Matt Brandt is here to talk to you about Eagle scouting.
I think we'll do the Eagle Scout presentations first, and then the proclamation.
My name is Matthew Brandt. I am the California Empire Council Natural Eagle Scout Chairman. I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council of Menifee, for taking the time to recognize scouting and the 2012 class of Eagle Scouts. The time for the City of Menifee. 2012 marked the 100th year of the Eagle Scout rank. The first Eagle Scout rank was awarded to Arthur Elder in 1912. Last year, the California Empire Council awarded 533 Eagle Scout awards. Eleven of those scouts reside here in the City of Menifee. The rank of Eagle Scout is only obtained by 4% of all the young men that start the scouting program. To obtain the rank of Eagle Scout, a young man must complete several citizenship and outdoor requirements consisting of six ranks. He must also earn 21 Merit badges, hold the leadership positions in his unit for a combined period of 18 months, complete community service hours, and plan and conduct a community service project. On average, these projects require hundreds of hours of community service and planning by the Eagle Scout. The City of Menifee is home to approximately 500 scouts, 11 Cub Scout packs, nine Boy Scout troops, nine venturing units, one Sheriff's Explorer post, two Fire Explorer posts. I'd like to thank and recognize the Menifee Youth Foundation, the Church of Latter-day Saints, the Rotary Club of Menifee, and the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and the Riverside County Fire Department, in cooperation with Cal Fire, for acting as charter organizations. The scouting program continues to grow, serving the young men and women of the area with the support of these organizations and the City of Menifee. I would again like to thank you on behalf of the Boy Scouts of America and the California Empire Council. It is now my honor to present to you the City of Menifee's 2012 Eagle Class. Kenneth Good III. For his Eagle project, he developed and managed the construction of a viewing station for the blind at the Menifee Lake. He organized and oversaw a book drive for Heritage High School, Paloma High School, and the Friends of the Library. Jason Stiljebauer. He oversaw the restoration of a fire pit and benches at the First Congregational Church. Jared Brandt. Jared oversaw the restoration and development of the Fire Safe Council Garden at Riverside County Fire Station 75. Sean oversaw the development and management of the restoration and construction of a storage unit for the Paloma Valley High School Track Team.
Scout Master Brandt, could you please join us up front, right here in the middle? Well, I had the privilege of attending this year's Eagle Scout ceremony, which was marvelous. I already mentioned that a couple of weeks back, but with young men coming up in the world like this, I think America will do just fine. And I cannot recite the Scout's pledge, but I know that it goes, "On my honor, I will do my best." So, and there are a couple of Scouts up here on the council. So, the Menifee City Council would like to present this proclamation to the Boy Scouts of America Incorporated on February 8th, 1910, and the District of Columbia. And by 1912, scouting was in every state of the nation, and today, over 100 million youth have taken part in scouting. And this year, Boy Scouting celebrates its 103rd anniversary, and in the City of Menifee, hundreds of youth are involved, and the City Council salutes the Boy Scouts for its commitment to the youth of this city. Now, therefore, the City Council of Menifee congratulates the Boy Scouts of America on its celebration and encourages the citizenship of Menifee to recognize this 103rd birthday of scouting. Congratulations for your leadership and volunteerism, sir. Did you want to get a group shot? Okay?
I'm going to go down to the back.
The scouts come up front.
Let's do a two-row shot.
They are tall, huh? There's orphan, you guys.
One more round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, members of the council. You almost sit down here if you've been there before.
Thank you.
That's the fun stuff, right there. Okay, next on the agenda, a presentation regarding new business improvement program presentation. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Our new business improvement program presentation will be given by Jeff Wyman, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. As the Economic Development Department is the arm of the city dedicated to working with the entire Menifee business community, the department continually strives to employ new programs that will assist Menifee businesses. This evening, I have a short presentation on the new Menifee Business Improvement Program. What I have found with meeting with small businesses in the community is that they're always striving and looking for tools to help them stay successful and to keep them competitive. From this, the Economic Development Department has sought out services and tools that benefit and assist businesses in this endeavor. The overarching purpose of the Business Improvement Program is to help businesses be successful. The goals of the program are to reach out to new and existing businesses, provide information and resources, and individual assistance to support solid business foundations. This, in turn, will encourage business expansion and job growth within the city. The program provides numerous benefits. For instance, as businesses succeed, this encourages business expansion, which promotes job growth, while advancing private investment into capital and property. As businesses expand, they will often improve and modernize their businesses. Business growth generates more sales tax revenue to help support essential city services, such as fire, police, and infrastructure improvements. The program also helps to support needed community amenities, such as restaurants, shopping, and entertainment amenities. The program will contract or partner with multiple agencies to provide assistance and information resources. This includes the Small Business Development Center, or SBDC. Staff is finalizing a contract with SBDC to provide business consulting and training services, business, sorry, assistance with business planning, marketing, SBA loan proposals, finance, accounting, human resources, and taxes and license assistance. Additionally, a key benefit is that the SBDC will provide one-on-one individual assistance through office hours in Menifee, here in Menifee, every other week. And the SBDC will coordinate quarterly workshops in Menifee on vital business topics. The program will partner with the Service Corps of Retired Executives also, or SCORE, which also provides low and no-cost education and mentorship opportunities for startup and growing businesses. Services include volunteer mentors and counselors, workshops, business tools, and webinars. Areas of assistance include business plans, growth strategies, technology resources, management, marketing, finance, and many others. Currently, SCORE provides some services through the Chamber of Commerce. The Business Improvement Program intends to expand these services to all businesses within the Menifee area. Next is the CDC Business Finance Corporation. This agency provides capital loans to small businesses, with loans ranging from anywhere from $10,000 to over $10 million. A nonprofit lender, the CDC works to make a difference by creating jobs and investing in the communities they serve. The Riverside County Workforce Development Center makes available numerous services to employers to help them maximize their success, including business analysis, recruitment services, outplacement services, human resource information, tax incentive information, hiring incentive programs, and labor market services. Finally, the Inland Valley Business and Community Foundation is a cooperative of local businesses designed to educate and enhance operations of small business owners. The foundation provides a platform for local business owners to engage, promote, and support the development of each other's businesses. It also provides members a series of workshops and seminars. Their programs are a forum of networking, idea sharing, team building, coaching, and Another aspect of the Business Improvement Program is an outreach campaign to get the word out about the benefits and the opportunities available. The outreach campaign will include information on a webpage at the city's website, linkages to partnership websites. We will send out information about the program via Menifee Matters and the Menifee e-newsletter. We'll broadcast press releases, circulate brochures and handouts, and work with the Chamber of Commerce as one of our partners to help promote the program. Finally, the approach and philosophy of the Business Improvement Program is to provide professional assistance, help businesses find the best suited options for them, help businesses seize opportunities, provide businesses with tools that will help them succeed, and make a positive investment in the community. This is an evolving program, and additional beneficial services will be added as they are identified. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Well, thank you very much for this report. I have, could we scroll back to the beginning slides?
Which one would you like to see, sir?
All the way back. Next one. Okay, I'm sorry. The avenues of assistance. I think it's the fourth slide.
And one more. I'm getting there.
There we go. Okay, so Small Business Development Center Service Corps, over at the SCORE program, could you go to the next slide?
Sure.
All right. CDC Small Business Finance, Riverside County Workforce Development Center. I sit on the workforce, the Riverside County Workforce Development Board. I'm on the Board of Directors, and we should leverage that organization and all of their assistance to the maximum extent that we can. They even have some federal dollars that are available for certain programs. Now, are you asking, are these things that you're doing now as our Economic Development Director, or are you asking for guidance from the council to move out on these programs?
This is a program that I've just created with the Economic Development Department, and this is a program that we're moving forward with, with a presentation to council to let you know about the great things that the city is moving forward with.
All right. With, what I'd like to ask concurrence of the council from at some point, or maybe, Mr. Johnson, you could address this separately, since it's not agendized yet, but recall on the mayor's top 10 agenda items, we have a mayor's business roundtable. I would like, I would like to see the mayor's business roundtable added to the avenues of assistance, as we develop that roundtable of business leaders, stakeholders, so that we can not only have these things that reach out and help businesses, but also we get the feedback from them, from a nice little group of leaders. So, at some, at some point, I'd like to bring that back, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. That's a great idea, a great addition. One of the reasons we wanted to get this in front of you is to kind of get a little consensus and direction that we're moving in the right way, and to see if we left out anything. So, you pointed out a great, a great point to add to our program. Thank you.
Mr. Denver.
This is huge. If, how many of our staff are going to be working on this, as you imagine? Well, I have two people in the Economic Development Department, but we will certainly be trying to, as the mayor said, leverage these agencies to help us assist the businesses in Menifee. So, the net of it is, is that we're going, people will come to the off, come to the city, you'll go out to the city, you'll send them to these other organizations. How exactly will it work? Yes. We're going to be doing all of that. As if they call us, we will certainly help them, help guide them to the appropriate agencies that can help them, any assistance that we can personally help them with, we will do so. Whatever it takes to help them out, that is our goal. You recognize the Chamber of Commerce does 20%, 30% of this right now, and SCORE, several other things, we need to coordinate that all in, and so it isn't duplicated. Right. Well, the chamber is one of our partners in a lot of the things that we do, so we're going to be working closely with them, and so we can have them help us and get the word out and provide information, not just what we're doing, but whatever information we can that would help small businesses.
Are there any other questions from the council? All right, fantastic start. As with any business plan, it's ever-breathing, ever-changing, and you flex to the conditions in the city, and we look forward to your economic development plan in the future.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes. May I have, may I have a second? Hearing note, is there any discussion, any additions? All in favor? Ordered. Are there any modifications to this agenda?
No, sir.
Mr. August? Okay, well, if you're looking to pull something off consent, we'll do that when we get to that item. Yeah. Okay. Hearing note, modifications, the agenda is approved. Madam Speaker, Madam Clerk, first speaker, please.
Linda Denver.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, councilmen, and staff, and community members. My name is Linda Denver, and I am representing Arts Council, Menifee, as the treasurer, but also as the Theater Arts Division Chair. In front of you, you should have a flyer that looks like this, show and tell. Vanna is coming. While she's doing that, I want to make you aware of the first item on, can we back up? Yes. On this Friday at 2:30, we're having a jam session at Case and Estero Center between 2:30 and 4:30. So, if you sing, or play an instrument, or both, it's open to everyone in the community, no charge. Just come on down and sit around and enjoy music and singing, and maybe dancing. I don't know if you enjoy the music. So, that's at 2:30 to 4:30 at the Case and Estero Center. Instrumental and vocal musicians are invited to come on and stir up the music. And then, the flyer that you have in front of you lets you know that we have a murder mystery dinner coming on Sunday, or sorry, Friday, March 15th, and Sunday, St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, we'll be performing Death Plays a Role. So, if you are part of our guests and having dinner with us, you'll get to try your sleuthing skills to find out who the murderer is among all of the eight suspects. So, you'll have dinner, including corned beef and cabbage, of course, and a show for $20. Seating is limited. We've already sold out half of Friday night, and we still have a couple of weeks to go. So, the number is on your flyer. I'll put some flyers out in the lobby as well. To make your reservations, by calling the phone number there. And please make your reservations by March 8th, as we do have to order our meal beforehand. So, there will be no tickets sold at the, at the door, limited seating, and we hope to see you there. Do you have any questions?
Oh, I do. Madam, do, is there any truth to the rumor that the mayor might be dead after this play?
No, no. The mayor is going to be alive and well, and I hope he comes to enjoy our meal.
Just checking.
And this play does happen in Killarney, so wear your green and come out and celebrate St. Patrick's Day.
But I'm Scottish.
Okay, well, we'll let you in.
Thank you, Dr. Denver, for your presentation. The Arts Council continues to do good works in this city. Next speaker.
Red Sullivan.
Good evening, council members. I'm here talking about Rotary, as the president of Rotary. We are 50 years old this year, and we are having two different celebrations for our 50th anniversary. One is on March 9th, and that's at the Ace Comedy Club. That's our fundraiser, starts at 4 o'clock. That's the red carpet. And the other one is on March 16th at Menifee Lakes, and that one is our Blue Tie Affair, which is the same as a black tie, only we're asking the men to wear blue ties or wear something blue to honor Rotary. And everyone is invited, if you need to, information, just get ahold of me, and we can tell you what the reservations are. We have lots of seating at the Ace Comedy Club, so that's not a problem. So, we hope you will come and join us, and join the fact that we've been here in the city for 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Next speaker.
No further speakers under public comments.
Very well. Next on the agenda, councilmember updates and comments. Mr. August.
I just wanted to pass on, the last couple of meetings had you have seen some ladies from Sun City K9 Adoption come in and ask people, get people come to their charity golf, their golf tournament this Saturday up at Golden Era Golf Course. Actually, I'll pass it on for them, since nobody's here tonight. It was, it was a tremendous success. It was much better than last year. There were about 65 people there, and I understand Mr. Ashley donated quite a generous gift and set up two foursomes there. So, anyway, I know the girls are not here today, but I'll say thank you for them. And my friend Kay and I, we both participated in an event and helped out with it. So, anyway, a good job to Sun City K9 and Adoption.
Thank you for that report. Mr. August, Mr. Denver.
Council, amongst several other things that's happened since the last meeting, the Lutheran church here in town had a birthday, had an anniversary. What a wonderful time it was. The mayor and I came. It was a great event. We had a great lunch, and what a great group of people, seniors and others, that were enjoying that day. And that was a marvelous church service. We got to drink real wine. At my church, we drink Kool-Aid or something like that, and it was really good. So, it was a very good time.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. This, tomorrow morning at 8:30 at the Case and Estero Center is the first annual senior showcase, being sponsored all day long, and it goes through till 5 o'clock. If any of you are interested in attending, I will be there. Also, this coming Saturday, we have the grand opening of the Big Sky portion of the Audie Murphy Ranch Development, and I'm going to attend that, and I think a couple others are. But with the consent of the council, I would like staff to prepare a welcome to Menifee plaque for me to present, or for us to present there. Can I get at least one person to agree to that?
So moved.
Thank you very much. And with that, are there any other councilmember comments or updates? And with that, are there any other council member comments or updates? Onto the consent calendar. We have a consent calendar with 10.1 through 10.7. Mr. August.
I'd like to, I'd like to pull. I'd like to pull 10.7 for comments, if not discussion, please.
Very well, Mr. August. It is pulled. May I have a motion for the balance of the agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Which brings us to agenda item 10.7, approve agreement with Shawn Nelson for consulting services to the city of Menifee. Mr. August.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to bring this up for comments, probably.
Pardon? I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. Did we have any speakers on any of the, on the consent calendar at all?
No.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me for the interruption, Mr. August.
That's okay. All right. Anyway, I wanted to, I wanted to make some comments on this, because I, I noticed there's been a lot of press coverage on this event over the last couple of weeks, and as a result, I've been getting a lot of calls from some of my constituents, and mostly, mostly positive comments, but of course, there are some that are not. But I want to chime in, and I want to make my comments known to everybody, that I am completely happy and in support of this arrangement with Mr. Nelson. I've had the opportunity to meet Mr. Nelson, and I've never met a more positive, more enthusiastic person in my life. He shared some stories with me. He had some experience with the Marine Corps and Twenty-Nine Palms, as working their recreation system up there. And believe me, it sounded like he was in the Corps for a long time up there. Very, very positive, and very, 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 very motivating. He, we talked about some football teams and organizations that have had a lot of success over the years. He really believes in the team concept, building organizations, laying foundations down and building up the team, where if one person should go down, the other person steps up and take that place. I'm really, really looking forward to working with him, and I, he's in the audience tonight, I say, but I do have one question for him. You don't have to answer it, but I got one of my emails from my constituent today saying, "At $10,000 a month as a mentor, this fellow best have the city glowing in the dark." How should I reply to him?
That's the goal.
Okay, all right. That's the goal. My last comment would be, leaving Mr. Johnson in his position, I've had the opportunity to work, work and see Mr. Johnson. I've been involved in meetings with him, I've been on trips with him, and so on and so forth. And I don't, I, I know he has a complete confidence in the staff, and I'm going to leave him there, and I'm sure he can learn a few things from Mr. Nelson. But he does exceptional work, and it's, he's probably someone the city can't, can't really do without right now. So I would like to say that I'm completely in support of this agreement with Mr. Nelson, and leaving Mr. Johnson as the interim city manager. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. August. Are there any other council comments?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Right. Yeah, I wanted to make some comments on this. I, I think this is going to potentially turn out to be a really big deal, not just for Menifee, but beyond. First of all, the support for Rob Johnson on this council is five zero, plus the support of the staff. This guy's really respected. And Shawn Nelson, when you do a little background check on him, all you do is come up with superlatives. I, I, I sit on some boards with some of the council on Intemecula, and I, I remember asking one of them just a few days ago, "Well, we're going to hire this guy. What do you, what do you, what do you think of him?" He said, "He is the best of the best." And, and that's her background. But I, I personally think that this may be kind of a prototype, kind of a, an example, a paradigm for some other cities in the future. And as great a reputation as Shawn has, and as well-respected as Rob is, what may turn out to be the biggest part of tonight will be the process. And the process may be emulated by others in the future. And I just remind some of the people in, in the office, I, and, and in the audience, I came back from Europe in early, in the seventies, and I got to be good friends with the guy who ran for Congress, and the mayor of Lakewood, and the city manager there. Very good friends on a personal basis with those people. And they were all happy about their new procedure called contracting out. It's a very obvious thing to do. It's like generating the pin or paperclip. It's just such an obvious thing to do. And people were doing a little bit of it, but nobody had really approached it and said, "Really, this is, this is a new paradigm. This is the way to work with new cities." So now, when you look in a textbook of political science, or you look in a textbook for public administration, you'll have a subheading called Contracting Out, and it'll start right out with, "This began in Lakewood in the early 1970s." And you might get a chance to read in the textbook, and I predict it's a possibility, that someday they'll have, they'll have something called, oh, I don't know what you, what you're going to call it. I was trying to come up with a name, reciprocal management. We'll call it reciprocal management for another name, because it's such an obvious process. Let me explain to you why I think it's, it may catch on like contracting out, and why, why it's a good decision. First of all, and I'll call it reciprocal management, for lack of a better term, it, there's less commitment of, of taxpayer dollars. And I say less commitment. When you go out and hire a brand-new city manager, usually you get a very experienced person. That's what you're after. But this is, these jobs are very risky to take. I mean, look around you. Who's let their city manager go recently? Temecula has, Elsinore has, Himmitt has, Senesinto has. Is that typical? Yes. All across the state and all across the nation. When a, when a guy goes in there, or a woman goes in there to take that job, it's a high-risk job. That's why it's high pay, and also because it's high risk. And they got to pay for their movement, et cetera, et cetera. They say, "Wait a minute. I want a, I want a, I want a package here. I want a severance pay." And sometimes, it's pretty big. We had a former city attorney here who walked away from Santa Ana with $400,000. About $400,000. We had our own city manager walk away, and we were up in the twos, and he wasn't even near two years. It's expensive, people. But that's the orthodox way of doing it. That's the way you do it. But in reciprocal management, there is no severance pay, because you're not hiring a guy to come in and work for you for full-time. That is not the point. Secondly, not only is there no severance pay, but there is more objective oversight by the council. How do you deal with the manager? It works two ways. It's a double-edged sword. If things get kind of short between a city manager and a council, the council gets very concerned politically. "Well, if we let this guy go, then we got to pay him a severance pay, and we're going to catch all this from the, from the, from the voter." And so they drag it out, and then there's some resentment both ways. It, it, it provides for objective oversight that you don't have right now, because that severance pay is not part of the equation. You get better on-the-job training. Everybody here looks at Rob Johnson and says, "Jeez, he's doing a great job. He's never been a city manager before." But you know, and I give a lot of credit to John Denver on this, and, and the mayor especially. Why, why change it? I mean, if it ain't broke, why try to fix it? But at the same time, the mayor, with, I think, the correct instruction, said, "We've been there, done that. We drove our head in the wall a number of times and hired somebody that was not experienced. Most cities don't do that. We did it. We got burnt. Let's not do it again." So after John and I went through a number of things, we started looking for options, as well as the mayor did. So you, you have, this is very important in the corporate world, and that is that you have on-the-job training, that you, you, you make sure that when you have valuable employees, you don't just pass them by. There's no question about who's going to be running this city. It's going to be Rob Johnson. But can he learn anything from somebody who's already done that before for a long, long period of time? And he would be the first to come out and say, "Boy, I'd really like to work with that guy. That's what he said to me. He said, 'He's the gold standard.'" There is, there's, there's more bounce for the same buck, for the taxpayer dollar. You can go out and, and, and work in a pool of, of men and women, they're not looking for a full-time job, but they have a lot of experience. They want to retire. And like me, you become an old spark plug, and some of them, like Shawn, are not old spark plugs yet. But they think, "I don't just, I don't want to just stop. I want to teach. I want to help. I want to see, I want to have a challenge." And so you can get somebody like that. They'll work for you, full-time, part-time. You'll have to pay them well. You're not paying, you're not paying them for a full-time job. You're not paying them by the hour. You're not paying them for what they do. You're paying them for what they know. And, and they'll come in, and there's no severance, there are no benefits. You get a really great bang for your buck. You'll pay them well, but you're going to pay them for what they know. And I, I would, I would say, in reference to this, this is, this is very common among businesses. When you get, make a selection in this, this kind of a situation, you bring your current guy who's running the city management in on them, in on the event of selecting who it's going to be. It won't work if you just have the council, because that's the orthodox way. No staff is in there. It's just the council that picks that new person. But you've got to have your city, current acting city manager. Why? Because he's picking his teacher. He's picking his mentor. He's picking somebody he's going to learn from, and the chemistry's got to be there. And that makes it different than what we've had, what we've had before. Well, in any event, I just wanted to point out, it, 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 in my opinion, probably, if people think about this, I think it's going to catch on. And so in the future, instead of, when we get in a bind, as we always have in the past, somebody gets fired, somebody gets terminated, somebody leaves, and you say, "Oh, we've got to go out and look at a bunch of new prospects." And then you pick somebody that you don't know, that's been fired or terminated, or been somewhere else, and pay them a high amount of money with a severance pay, and maybe it works for two or three years. Now you go out in a pool of guys that say, "I don't need the job, but I'd really enjoy it, and I'll come on board, and I can help you as a consultant." And keep the guy that you've already got running your city. He's doing a good job. It works. It's a new paradigm. The one thing I'll just say, Jeff and Peter, when they got contracting out, nobody immediately reported on it, because as a rule, when you see something that's a watershed event, you don't recognize it when it's happening. And it took months before the press jumped on contracting out. Just, just maybe a little help there, guys. Anyway, Shawn and Rob, congratulations, and to my colleagues, and the mayor, and John, and all of you, I want to thank you for being, having me be a part of what I think will turn out to be one of the biggest decisions I've ever had a chance to make in politics. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Wonderful comments. Appreciate every one of them. Mr. Denver.
I'd also like to compliment Shawn and, and Rob for all that they, Shawn, what he's going to do, and Rob, what he does. Also, I would like to make the point that everybody understands that Mr. Nelson is going to be working for us, for the city council. He has specific job responsibilities. They have to do with such things as strategic planning, economic development, staff development, training, succession planning, organization development, community services, parks and recreation, and those other items that we come up with, we come up with, as important for the city. In a city this size, as has been said by the mayor before, and others before him, the city of this size would have normally at least twice the number of people working for it as we do. And we're a conservative council, and we, and with the economy the way it is, we have the people we have. Sometimes, the city of Menifee is accused of not doing certain things, grant writing, a whole number of things. It's because we haven't had enough people to do the jobs, in part. And then we accuse, some have accused us and the staff of not getting things done. Shawn Nelson is the unique person for us to point in directions of things that a, a city this size should be doing. And I'd just like to make the point, in addition to the times that he sits with Rob and, and answers questions and gives advice and such things as that, he has particular jobs that he's going to do for us to make Menifee a better place. And I'd just like to add that if I could.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. I, Mr. Furman.
Well, I guess it's my own.
No.
All right. Since everybody's making a comment, my, the, in a previous council discussion, I thought, since Mr. Nelson couldn't work full-time, that a little counseling would be a thing of value. Okay. But it seems that we're, we're throwing a blanket over City Hall and saying to Mr. Nelson, "Jump in there and fix it." Myself, I'd rather see some targets, some scope of work, and I would actually like to see, two months from now, a report, a progress report, recommendations, and some serious scope of work that, that will be performed, and some great ideas that you have to, to fix it, as, as we say. And I want to comment one on an article that Mr. Nelson said, that, "For me, this is an opportunity to help." Okay? And the quote from President Kennedy, "It's not what the city can do for you, but what you can do for the city." I want to see some positive action in the next two months. I, I haven't spent but an hour with you the whole time, and we're hoping to get more done. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Right. I, and I certainly have no disagreements with the comments you've made, Councilman Furman. I think they're good comments, but as, as Councilman John Denver pointed out, that's a part of reciprocal management. The consultant works for the council, not for the manager. He's a mentor to the manager. He's a mentor to the council, and he's, he's involved in strategic planning, whereas the manager, Rob, is running the city. So we can do all those things that you mentioned, Councilman Furman will be able to do it, because he's going to be working for the council. There's no disagreement up here.
Well, I think that, are there any other council member comments? I have nothing really to add, except to thank the city manager search committee for your good works. I thank the staff. I thank Rob Johnson for doing what he's doing. And when we flash forward in the future, and we look back on this decision, which is a paradigm shift, I think that, that we will find that it was the right move to make. And there's a, in business and corporate world and other larger agencies, there's a thing called the scope of work, or the span of control of that work. And the argument that we're, the decision that we're going to be making this evening by keeping Mr. Johnson where he is, is to run the day-to-day operations and delivery of services to the residents of the city, and allow Mr. Nelson to assist us, the entire city, with the strategy, the economic development plan, the parks and, how are we going to deliver parks and wrecks to the city in the future? Are we going to continue to operate on a bifurcated scenario, which we have right now between Valleywide and, and on contract with EDA? And a whole host of other functions that frankly, just have not, for one reason or another, have not had attention paid to them. You're going to see a better City Hall, you're going to see a better staff, you're going to see better delivery of services, and five, six, seven years down the road, the foundation that this team is going to put in place, you'll look back and say, "I remember when we made this decision, and it was the, look, look, look what we've been able to do as a result of it." So armed with all of those comments, may I have So, armed with all of those comments, may I have a motion for this agenda item, please?
Show a move.
May I have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote on this, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Nelson. Welcome aboard. Okay, next up on the agenda, public hearing. And we have no public hearing this evening, which brings us to discussion items. Item 12.1, approved posting of documents and forms as recommended on the city's website. Mr. Johnson, do we have a staff report on this item?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Kathy Bennett, city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, this came from part of your top 10 list of items that through council you asked us to return to you. And we have looked over the various documents and forms that might be able to be posted. The city clerk's office is always interested in the greatest transparency that we can imagine, and we are. We do hope we're the link between government and the people, and we hope we can continue to be that. But by using these documents and placing them online, it will, I think, make it even better. So we are recommending that you post on the website, and most of them would link from the clerk's page, because most people will know to go there. There's other places you might find some of these documents, however. So we're recommending to post the current contracts for city manager, city attorney, fire and police services, the current salary schedule by pay range, this current city organizational chart, and the Form 700 for the mandated code filers. That is, those people by government code who are mandated to file, and that form goes to the FPPC, the city council, planning commission, city manager, city attorney, et cetera. There are some filers that are mandated to file. And some of these forms, you will already see. For instance, the current salary schedule is already in the budget. But if you don't know, it's on page 312, you might not jump out and find it. So making it just more visible, working with finance to put everything out front through the clerk's page would be an easy way to do this. So that is our recommendation tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any council member comments? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember August. Did you push the button? Oh, okay. I would like a roll call vote on this, Madam Clerk.
Of course. Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can we get an explanation from Furman? Why not?
I want to thank my colleagues for making the city of Menifee more transparent. Many of these initiatives were undertaken by law at one point. But posting these documents on our website so that people don't have to ask for them is showing the residents that we believe in transparency, and we not only walk the, or talk the talk, but we walk the walk, so to speak, with this. So thank you very much, council, for your approval of this. Next agenda item, 12.2. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we have a general plan, budget, and scope of work to be presented by Carmen Cave, our community development director, in which we'll focus on the items in the general plan that, and bring council up to speed, get a consensus so that we can move forward. Ms. Cave?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight's item is a general plan, budget, and scope of work change. As many people may remember, the original general plan contract was approved by the city council in September of 2009. The general plan document would contain the land use element, circulation element, housing element for the Round 4 Rena, which is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Number that is handed down by SCAG, the air quality element, the safety element, the noise element, the conservation and open space element, the community design element, and the economic development element. Typically, a city's general plan has seven mandatory elements, and some of them are combined. Our general plan had additional pieces to it to make it a more comprehensive plan and help the city in its long-range goals and planning. Also included in the original scope of work was a monitoring and implementation plan and an environmental impact report. The reason I'm here tonight asking for a budget, or it's not a budget amendment, it's a contract amendment. The staff did budget for changes this year, because we knew last year that there were additional items that had been requested, and we made room in this year's budget for it. So this is only a contract amendment. So over the course of the past three years, several changes have been made to the scope of work at the request of city council, planning commission, and city managers. Those changes included additional materials, additional meetings that exceeded the number originally scoped in the original scope of work. And they cannot be accommodated under the existing remainder of the budget. So what was authorized to be changed? There was additional funds reallocated to provide additional analysis to our housing technical report that created our housing element. The original scope of work specified 10 general plan advisory committee meetings, of which we had 18. The original scope had four meetings with the planning commission and city council, which would have accommodated two meetings for each. The planning commission had seven meetings on the general plan draft land use map. With the planning commission. There were additional mappings and graphics that were requested by the city manager, as well as planning commission and city council requests for information. Those seven meetings that we had before the planning commission, we were asked to bring back revised exhibits for their review at their next meeting. So every time we made those changes, we kept clocking on additional money onto that meter. The original scope of work also assumed two formal rounds of negotiations with housing and community development on our housing element. There was additional work that was required. However, we do have a letter from the state saying that our housing element, if you were to adopt it, would be compliant with all of the state regulations. There was additional project management. Because the contract and the project was originally an 18-month project, we are now looking at 47 months before we would be complete in August of this year. There's additional money. If we have these people working longer than 18 months, it will cost us additional money for project management. There was also a supplemental build-out analysis requested for the economic development corridor expansion, which was a land use designation that was added to the general plan land use draft map. And there was also a request to do an alternative on the EIR, our environmental impact report, for an expanded economic development corridor beyond what was in the draft land use map. The council may wish to further discuss the changes to this alternative analysis or the draft land use map. And those changes would also require us to analyze the degree of work that would be entailed and may cause additional charges. How did we do all of this extra work and stay within our budget? Well, we had to delete some of the items. We robbed Peter to pay Paul in order to stay on budget. So what was deleted? The staff deleted the economic development element. And that was an optional element under state law. We started picking things that were going to make sure that we did have a compliant general plan, but it started to take away some of the better items, in my opinion, and some of the things that would have made Menifee stand apart from other general plans in our area. Also deleted was the community design element. And that element was to create a sense of place and provide goals and policies for the city to develop the communities of Quail Valley, Sun City, and Romaland and other parts of the city with a unique character. What that would have done was given policies and goals and implementation measures to create the specific identities that those communities have requested, that we continue to hear from those communities, that they want to feel part of Menifee, but they also want to retain their sense of place as an individual community within the larger city of Menifee. We also deleted the air quality element. That is something that is helpful to create a better understanding of what air pollutant emissions are generated within the city and how we can better improve the air quality of the area. Also was deleted was a fiscal assessment. And that analyzed the city's costs and revenues based on the ultimate development of that general plan land use map that was already drafted and approved by the city council. A fiscal impact model was to be developed to discuss the impact of the plan, which would look at how much our roads would cost, how much our sewers would cost, how much the general fund would have to contribute, how much money we would have to find from state and federal agencies in order to pay for past sins where the infrastructure did not keep pace with the development that went on. And then a final category is what is needed due to the delay in time. When you have an 18-month contract that stretches to 47, there are additional costs. One is additional work on the elements where we have to renew data that was originally done back in 2009 and 2010, and bring it up to date to 2013. We also would have to look at additional vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas analysis for our traffic subconsultant in order to be compliant with Senate Bill 375 and Assembly Bill 32. And finally, we have additional project management costs, because every time we make a phone call, every time we work with our consultants to provide information and to bring them out to meetings, it does cost us additional money. And then study sessions and public hearings. We are looking at four planning commission meetings and four city council meetings to get us across the finish line. If we do not have four meetings for each body, our costs would be reduced, and we would realize the savings. So at this time, the staff recommendation is to approve the contract amendment number two with the planning center in an amount not to exceed $151,014, to extend the contract through August of 2013, and to provide direction to staff regarding any changes to the draft land use map that had been previously approved. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you for that thorough report. Mr. August.
I am inclined to approve and vote for the staff's recommended action, but I have a question I'd like to ask. As you know, there are, some of these items that you said are mandated by the state, or not, they're mandatory, as opposed to some are not mandatory. And by approving the staff's recommendation, we, of course, we're approving the ones that have been non-mandated. Could you just give me a little bit of an insight? What not approving, and what's the difference between not approving or approving? What difference would that make to the city in moving forward with the general plan?
Well, if you delete the optional items, that would be specifically the economic development element, community design element, air quality element, and fiscal assessment, we could still create a general plan that was compliant with state law. Those items were designed to help us in the longer term and the bigger picture and give us more guidance that would help guide our capital improvement plan, that would help guide the work plan for the various departments in the city to achieve the goals and visions as were expressed to us back in 2009, 10, 11, and 12, and moving forward. People's goals change, and people's priorities change. But to leave these items in, number one, lives up to the promise of the original scope of work. There isn't a meeting that goes by with the planning commission where they're not asking me about the community design element, and how are we going to design our parkways? How are we going to design our parks? How are we going to make Sun City look better? How are we going to make Quail Valley retain its identity? Those are the items that would have been in a community design element. In addition, the economic development element and the fiscal assessment together were going to give us the broader picture of what it's going to take as, from a commitment of fiscal resources from the city forward to implement the entire general plan. Now, the general plan is typically a 20, 30-year document. I think ours is going to be a 50-year document. Because at the rate of development and the rate at which this community wants to grow, we will not reach build-out within 20 years. And because of the rural elements that you want to preserve, because of the trail development that you want to create, those are costs that are going to have to be borne somewhere. And those elements would help us identify where they would come from. They would give us a work plan on how we can move forward. And it would give us an opportunity, because we have to do annual monitoring of how we're meeting the goals of the general plan. So every year, we are required to send a report saying how we're complying with our general plan. So it's an internal document for the staff to use to make sure we're doing what you tell us to do. Number two, it's a way of telling the state that we're doing what we said we were going to do. And number three, it tells the public that the city council is setting policies and budget priorities so that we are implementing the programs that we said we would implement.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Well, because it's spending more money, I originally took a rather negative view of this. And then I took the time to go over this with you personally. I read the material that you put out, Carmen, very carefully. Went over the whole thing. And when I finished, I could only conclude that you really did a good job of laying this out and making it very understandable. And making it very understandable to me to not go ahead with your recommendations on the full amount would be, in the long run, penny-wise and pound-foolish. And so I'm delighted to support what you're trying to do. And I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Do we have any other comments? I just have a clarification from the third recommendation down. Provide direction to staff regarding any changes to the land use map. And in the staff report, it says, "Provide direction to staff for scope of changes to be studied in the alternative land use map." Which one do you want?
It's the same. It's the same, because you can choose to have the alternative and look at it two different ways. There's also a speaker that I've been told about who would like to make a request from you for either the draft land use map or the alternative. So it is totally within your discretion to amend that draft map now and have one map studied, or to ratify direction to the city manager that the city manager gave to the staff to do that alternative analysis. And that was an expanded economic development corridor. I do have some maps available that I thought I had probably about 5:30, that I probably needed to show some pictures that might help explain what the member of the public is going to ask for, and to clarify some history on what happened, who asked for what, what the boundaries are, and we're looking at this alternative. To clarify, though, and to make it easier for you to understand, the alternative analysis for the EIR was not ever voted on by the council. So we need your vote tonight on whether to do an alternative analysis. And that was something that we were directed to do, but there was no budget or scope of work change to pay for that. So we need to take care of that and close that loop. If you do not choose to have an alternative studied under the EIR, you've just saved almost $19,000 if you choose not to move forward.
But it is included in the $151,000 that you're asking for. And would doing this not give us a better general plan?
Under the alternative scenario?
Let me ask it another way. Approving not only the mandatory functions that we have to do, but all of the optionals that are listed in the staff report and as you presented, for the amount of money that it would take to increase the contract, I think it would be my perception that we'd get a better general plan in the process.
I think absolutely, because it's not the same as everybody else's, and it gives you, again, the opportunity for the long-view tools to make sure that you're implementing the vision that you have.
Okay, I understand. Thank you for that clarification. And Madam Clerk, you had your button pushed first.
Yes, sir. Just to let you know, we do have a speaker on this item.
All right. Then with the council... Then with the council members who have their buttons pushed, would you like to hear the public speaker first, or would you like comment? All right, we'll take the public commenter now.
Very well. John Maher.
Is this the same proposal that we got two meetings ago?
This is an addendum to that.
So this is an addendum to what you presented to us at a council meeting two meetings ago?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Maher. On January 22nd, I presented a proposal to include the First Baptist Church and the west side of Sweetwater Canyon Road in the GPA 1040. Tonight, I'm presenting an addendum to that proposal to support our request. I would like to give a little past history on what has occurred. When GPEC started to build the general plan, it progressively moved west from the 215 freeway towards our area. Oddly, it stopped on the east side of Sweetwater Canyon Road, dividing our street down the middle. Residents on the west side of Sweetwater Canyon were not contacted by the city regarding the city plan activities. When this was known, we presented a proposal to be added. Early 2010, GPEC included us and put us on the general plan map. In 2011, staff took all of us out of the plan and relocated the land use line east towards the 215. In 2012, council restored the GPA 1040 plan to the original forming EDC, however, neglected to include our side of the street when GPEC had included us in. Approximately two to four weeks later, staff was directed to include the additional areas in the EIR study, but our side of the street once again was omitted. This has placed our street in an awkward position of being divided down the middle. Our street conforms well in the economic development corridor as shown by our maps, photos, and proposal presentations. Therefore, we're asking and requesting the city to maintain the original proposal, but add the church in the west side of Sweetwater Canyon Road to this land use area.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Councilmember August, you had your button on.
My question to Ms. Cave was going to be, if we vote to approve the staff's recommendation tonight, would we be approving the EIR alternative plan?
As shown on this map, yes. But this map does not include Mr. Maher's request.
And when would we?
Who would like to accommodate his request, we can include it in this alternative for the EIR and sew it all up.
Okay, thank you.
Miss question for Carmen again. In the land use, could you give a little land use and zoning regs, how they interact with each other?
Certainly. The general plan tells you what generally goes where. Zoning tells you how it's to be done. So your general plan gives you residential, commercial, industrial types of land use designations. The zoning lies under it. You can have a general plan land use designation of residential, one acre minimum. And then the zoning under it would be rural agricultural where it has intensive horsekeeping and something else, or it could be residential estate, for example, where it doesn't encourage animal keeping and it just wants large lot homes. So the zoning tells you what and where. Is it going to be three stories or two stories? Is it going to have 25-foot front yards or 20-foot front yards and 10-foot side yards? That's what the zoning does for you. When you settle on your general plan, we will then go to work on revising the zoning code to make sure that, number one, the zones match the general plan land uses, which they do not right now. When Riverside County did the RCIP Riverside County Integrated Plan in 2000, oh goodness, I'm losing it.
Four.
2004 or '06, they did not bring their zoning code into compliance and make it consistent. You're required to have consistent zoning by state law, and they never did that. So at times, we're finding ourselves where the zone doesn't quite match, and we have been working with applicants that find themselves with a general plan land use designation and a zone that doesn't match. We'll process their zone change and recommend that to bring it into compliance, and we will be supporting that zone change because ultimately, we're serving the general plan.
Now, we're going to have a little catch-up there to do, right? Once the land use is approved, then we have some time that we have to work on the zoning. How long would it take to get the zonings up to the land use? Are we going to do them on a case-by-case basis, or?
Oh, no, we need to do a comprehensive review. I already have a matrix that shows what zones would be compatible with the proposed land use designations and what. It's a multi-step process, and I envision this as being very intensive with public input because so much interest has been shown in issues that are more related to the zoning than the general plan land use designation. So I would see many public workshops to get people comfortable with the ideas of what we're doing. I would want to work closely with the planning commission to look at what our designations are to make sure that, A, they fit, B, do we need to create new ones to fill a void that may exist? Because when you look at the totality of the zones in the county zoning code and what we have in Menifee, there's a lot extra left over that maybe we want here in Menifee. Or maybe there are some that we have in Menifee that we don't want anymore, that we want to either eliminate or alter in some fashion. For example, what's the difference between a business park and an office park? We really need to work on the definition of that because they can be very different conceptually, where a business park is single-story warehouse, office in front. But an office park is multi-story like we have here at the Han Professional. But sometimes, they get mixed together in our current code, and it makes it difficult for us to really plan how we want things to lay out. And we find that we're mixing things that probably shouldn't be mixed, and we want to separate those to create the community that you envisioned.
Is that work done between the staff and the planning commission?
It's, well, the city council is the ultimate body to approve that. The planning commission in the past has expressed intense interest in working on this. I could see subcommittees being worked out. It's going to depend on really the program that we bring you, the budget we bring you, and how you want to implement this. But again, I really see a need to do a lot of public workshops, a lot of public outreach. And if people's zones are changed, we're going to have to do a lot of talking to those property owners with what we're proposing to make them comfortable because you change somebody's zoning, you're changing the value of their property.
They would all have to be notified by mail, is that correct?
Yes.
And you mentioned rural estate. I don't think we have that designation, do we?
No. We were told not to use that word.
Right, we went back to the RR?
Correct.
All right. Thanks, Carmen.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Thanks for the promotion.
You're welcome.
Formerly having been a councilman for the area that Mr. Mayor just, the speaker just referred to, I recall that he and the church and a number of people were complaining bitterly about a particular business, and so was I, on Sweetwater Canyon. If it became or remained industrial, depending upon how you defined industrial, could that not complicate matters a little bit? In other words, you could not just go in and preempt that business under that heading? And I would think it would, I'm not asking really for an answer other than, I think it's a rhetorical question. It then would become a bit more complicated if we were going to try to shut them down or promote them.
To a degree, yes. One of the problems that we have faced under the current general plan is called the Scott Road Policy Area. And that general plan amendment 1040 that Mr. Maher referred to was kind of a blessing and formalization of the policies included in the Scott Road Policy Area. That area under the Riverside County plan was envisioned to emerge or evolve as an area for light industrial uses and locally-serving commercial uses. So when we had an application for the Hilton Hay site on the Wicker Tree Farm, we had to start making some judgment calls on what that policy is versus what the eventual outcome of that area wants to be. So it's a tough balancing act based on what we have right now, what people were told by whomever, or how they interpret that policy. So the property owner in question was relying on the eventuality of the Scott Road area becoming a legal means for him to conduct what today is considered illegal because it doesn't quite fit that definition yet, kind of extended beyond the home-based or locally-serving business and evolved into what we have complaints about today.
Thank you. Mr. Furman.
The situation that Mr. Mayor is talking about, the area, do we have to give you direction to include that area now? Or, he would kind of like to know where he stands. Does he get in now? Does he get in later? Or it would be, what would be the best convenient way to put that in effect?
I think convenience.
To make him join.
Convenience is out the window, I think. We need to be looking at costs. And to look at costs, if you want to contemplate it, I would ask you to tell us to do it now and include it in this alternative. The circled area is the area that previously was requested to be included in the purple blob. The purple blobs are the economic development corridor as approved in the current land use map. Those striped areas was the alternative that we were given direction to do, but there was never a vote taken. If you look at where the purple extends to the west, you'll see there's a square missing on the south side versus the north side to match up. Mr. Maher is asking you to true up that purple square and add that.
Mr. Edgerton.
Well, I agree with Mr. Maher. Either both sides should be, both sides should be the same, whether they go light industry or not, you know, I don't know. I think it would be premature to be making decisions before we had, as you described, a number of workshops. That impacts a lot of people, many more than say just Mr. Mayor. They may all agree with him. They may not agree with him. And I think after the workshops, we'll have a much better idea of where we are. I would think it would be premature to make some decision tonight.
Mr. Denver.
I think Mr. Mayor's been here several, several times. I think we ought to include him into this. I agree with the concept of all the workshops. I agree that people are going to have their say, and we're going to have a lot of explaining to do, one way or the other. But I say that we include it into this project and we, it was well-stated, when it's the penny and pound argument, let's make this as large as it is for economic reasons. And then, trust me, I think you and I have talked about this, this part down in the very bottom of this is years off, years off. This is, none of us will be here when this even thinks about being involved. This is at least three cycles away. And so there'll be lots of time to change this whole thing and relook at it when times change as it goes along. And I certainly would include it in because, as Mr. Edgerton says, it's odd to have something allowed on one side of the street and not the other. So I say we include it and move forward.
Mr. Furman, you were up next.
I can appreciate, I think Mr. Mayor's done all the legwork, all the people in the neighborhood, and I know he's talked to everybody on both sides of the tree line, everything, everything there. And I agree with Mr. Denver, the cheapest and the best way would be to square off the purple blob now and get it done.
Mr. Edgerton.
Well, the reason that I wouldn't support squaring it off now, I agree with Mr. Mayor that both sides of the street should be the same, but for example, the idea that everyone agrees with it, I don't believe that's fact. I know the church was very unhappy with that business next to it, as well as some other people up the street from the blob. So if you, the point is, if you make that all light industry, you've got a lot of people below it, and you've got a lot of people above it that are very disturbed about the idea that any of it would be light industry. So their contention should be, yes, both sides of the street should be the same, but they should be rural residential, not light industry. But I couldn't support a change now. I certainly might after the workshops, but I personally believe the workshops will point out that many of the people around there are very much opposed to light industry coming up that street or even all the way up Saginaw.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, it's been some really good, really good discussion. What staff has been focused on is trying to review the entire map and identify all the impacts. And you're right as to whether you really don't have to select what that region would be known as, but if you don't include it now into a light industrial where there are far greater impacts known than rural residential, if you choose to change it later, there's going to be more expense and a longer timeframe to reopen the EIR and do a different study. So the idea would be that we tried to identify all the impacts for the greatest, most impactful EIR you could get, and then when it comes back to you for your final approval, you may start removing items that are too impactful, or you may reduce the impacts by removing items or changing their designation. Is that correct, Ms. Cave? Could you collaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, that is correct, and that's the purpose of the environmental analysis. You're looking at no impact, slight impact, significant impact, and impact that can't be mitigated. So we would be, I'm expecting impacts in the city based on the current land use map that are going to be significant and unavoidable. And then it would be up to you to decide what impacts you're willing to live with and what we can fix by taking away units or taking away roadways or taking away square footage of commercial retail or office or agriculture or whatever it is that's creating that impact that is significant that the community can't live with.
Mr. Furman.
In that purple blob area, there is a, quite a few residential areas, I can tell. Now, what happens to their zoning once they join the purple blob?
Nothing changes in the zoning until we change the zoning code, but the general plan land use would overrule their current zoning if they were to do some improvements at this time. They would become basically legal non-conforming within their existing use. And if they went to make a change prior to the amendment of the zoning code, they would have to live within a general plan land use category.
Right. I mean, say example, it's a RR zoning that would, right now would permit horses and livestock. Once it's changed to light industrial, can they still keep horses and livestock?
Yes. Yes, until they make changes to their property. If they want to add another barn, if they want to add on to their house, that would trigger compliance. But by the same token, if you are residential and you become commercial, we're not going to come and turn you out of your house. You can live in your house until, and pass it on to generation after generation. But if you don't make any improvements to your property, you will always stay with the uses that you have.
Okay, I think that was, actually, it was a concern of mine because I thought maybe that if they changed that, it would change your zone. if they changed that, it would change their zoning regulations. And that was an important factor in the decision when I talked to John, that he might be giving up some stuff. But he's really going to stay under the RR zoning, but to do everything that he's doing now, and it won't affect anything. You explained it very well. Thank you.
Mr. Edgerton?
Might, might change it if whoever bought it wanted to be residential. But my, my concern is, in reference to making a change tonight, there is probably going to be, and I'll let the workshops speak for themselves, but I'm going to speculate there'll probably be a lot of people come out of that area, and they're going to want to roll that whole 1040 plan away from, not just Sweetwater, but down Scott Road, change the whole formation. Does it make any difference what we do tonight, one way or the other? If we anticipate that as a very good possibility?
If you include it today, you will know what the impacts are. If you don't include it today and people come and say, what's going to happen? Or, why, why do we do this? Why don't we do this? We won't know the answer.
Excuse me. It still could be rolled back at a later date. The whole thing could be.
Absolutely. I call it rearranging the deck chairs.
Yeah.
If there, if you end up with the plan that you have with too much residential and not enough commercial, you'll know at the end where your imbalance is, and you'll be, you have the opportunity to balance it back. But until we do the environmental analysis, we don't know what those impacts are.
Because we may end up with a different configuration, particularly if you're looking at light industry. It may be, there's some, some more area over here that might become light industry closer to the freeway further south, more, more up in the north. In other words, when we look at our whole general plan, this whole configuration could change. However, we vote tonight won't make a difference. Am I, do I understand that?
In that sense, you are correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Denver?
To sum up what you're saying is, is what you're gathering is information. You're asking us tonight to vote for this for the largest area that makes sense that we've talked about, and then we can modify it from there. So, you're, you're saying if we don't study it all, we haven't studied it all. If we study it all now, we can then understand it and make decisions.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think it's my turn.
I guess that's okay.
I don't know. I think John wanted to make a motion.
So, in light of Mr. Maher's request, is it staff's recommendation to add the addendum in now so that it be considered for the, as part of the EIR?
Yes.
For the purpose of the study?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The question that I have, at what point, this is in reference to the extended economic development coordinator, corridor, the diagonal purple lines. At what point will we be able to take public testimony in that area? At what point are we going to notify the public for people to come? And the reason why I'm asking that question is, I was not on the council when the GPA 1040 was approved, but, and I don't know, I don't have an opinion on that matter one way or another at this juncture. I don't know enough about it yet, that particular amendment, and I'm going to intend to study it at great length when it comes back. But what I have ascertained is, I'm not so, I'm not comfortable with the manner in which GPA 1040 was brought to the table. It was the applicants of the 58 some odd property owners who filed for that GPA 1040, initially filed it with the county. And when the City of Menifee came and incorporated, the county said, ah, it's, let's have Menifee. You know, let's give it to them. Is that a fair statement?
Fair.
Okay. So, I guess one of my, one of my long-term questions has been, you know, where did that permit money go? Did that get passed through to the City of Menifee? Or is it sitting up at the county? Would be one question. Number two, was it really legally presented to the city in the manner in which it was in terms of having it go through the General Plan Advisory Committee, being heard at that level, and then put forth to the Planning Commission, and then put forth to the council as part of the land use map element as part of the general plan? So, in that whole process, the reason why I'm concerned about the extended economic development corridor is because I don't think there was enough public testimony. It was amended on the floor in a city council meeting, and I'm not comfortable with that. However, I vote on it in the future, I'm just not comfortable with how that whole amendment came forward. And it's not an indictment on staff. That's not what I'm saying. I think there was a series of events that came about, and the vote is what it is. It's a legal vote. It's part of the land use map, the draft land use map now, as, as an approved element of the general plan. I just want to know, I want to hear from you. At what point will we be able to seek the input of the other residents who were affected, say, out 1,000 feet from these borders?
Technically, at the Planning Commission, public hearings.
Okay.
If you want, we can schedule and work on public workshops prior to that. But legally, the process is set up with public hearings before the Planning Commission and the City Council for such purpose. But again, this is a complicated issue, and it may require additional outreach.
And so, if it requires additional outreach, was what I'm asking about, that's not contained in the 151,000, and we'd have to maybe add it later?
It depends. If staff here can handle it, we don't have to have the consultant present, and then we don't pay the consultant because we should have those answers for them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Denver?
The mayor asked some serious and interesting questions. But once again, we're studying the whole situation, and then we can make decisions as we gather the data.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. All right. Are there any other questions of staff? Mr. Furman?
I, we're going back and forth here so many times, and I, I want to get this clear in my head. It's cheaper if we do it now, and it can be rolled back later. Is that correct?
Correct.
Pretty much.
All right. I'm going to make a motion that we include it right now.
Well, there's, is there a motion?
Did you make a motion?
No, there has not been a motion yet.
If you would like-
Hold up, hold up, hold up, please. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The recommendation would be to approve staff's recommendation.
As amended.
With the addition of Mr. Maher's piece.
So, Madam, is that your, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
And that's the second. Madam Clerk, could you restate that motion, please, before we vote?
Thank you. The motion is to approve staff's recommendation with the addition of the additional piece that Mr. Maher is requesting. And I'll have to get wording on how to call that for this, but I understand what the motion is.
As long as we understand what we're voting on. Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, I did not catch the second.
That was Mr. Denver.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton, Councilmember Denver, Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for an extensive staff report and a discussion that is democracy in action. Thank you very much. On to the next agenda item, City Attorney Report.
Hold on, wait.
Mr. Furman?
I want to reconsider my vote on 12.1, please. I, I was foggy in my thinking, and I meant to vote yes, and I voted no. So, could you re-
Mr. Mayor, may I explain the process for you?
Yes.
Yes, please.
A reconsideration of a vote can happen at the same or next meeting.
Right.
And it must be, a reconsideration must be considered first. In other words, will you like the reconsideration? And it must be made by someone on the prevailing side. Is there someone who would like to make that motion to reconsider?
I understand the protocol. The Councilmember Furman cannot ask for reconsideration, so we need to have one of the other council members motion to reconsider 12.1. Is there a motion to reconsider 12.1? Is there a motion to reconsider 12.1?
I, I make the motion.
All right. May I have a second to reconsider 12.1? I will second the motion for reconsideration. Now that we have approved the, we need a vote on reconsideration.
Yes, please.
Roll call vote on reconsidering item 12.1.
Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Don't you love the way that works?
So, armed with that reconsideration.
Now we have to vote.
I would need to have someone take the motion over as it was brand new. You can start again.
Okay. So, on Agenda Item 12.1, we have approved posting of documents and forms as recommended on the city's website. May I have a motion to approve that agenda item as presented by the city clerk?
So move.
May I have a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
You have no, how much fun it would be to vote no, but I'm not going to.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I understand that happens from time to time. Okay. Okay. Next, the City Attorney Report.
Yes. Excuse me, thank you. The council requested that we take a look at various ordinances and resolutions, policies, matters affecting the city that were in the beginning process of being considered over the last year or so. In September of 2011, there was an ad hoc committee formed for the purpose of reviewing city ordinances in particular, and it met for most of a year. And some things got started, some things got talked about, and some things, a lot of things right now, have yet to be completed. We thought what we would do is bring back to you, and you've been presented with a staff report, itemizing the issues that are out there. Some of them are ordinance revisions, a few of them are resolutions that establish policy, and go through them, and in doing that, set some priorities so that we know that the directions and goals of this council are being served and that we're, we are doing it, taking these matters on in the manner in which the council would like us to do that. There is, of course, a lot to be done, and therefore, we'd like to kind of get a sense of your priority. In, in circulating this, this staff report came out last Thursday, the mayor has taken the job on of setting his priorities and sharing those with us. And what you see on the screen is a listing of the mayor's priorities. As, this has been submitted mostly as a means of cutting through the time that would otherwise be required to go one by one and, you know, have you vote on this and so on. So, if you want to take a look at those priorities that are there and confirm or readjust, then we would certainly appreciate your guidance so that we can perform the tasks in a way that advances the goals that you most care about right now. If you'll note, the first category is elegantly phrased, is low hanging fruit. And these, this is the noise ordinance, parking ordinance, SEQA guidelines. They're basically ready to go or can be made so very quickly. SEQA guidelines are something you need to have in place and so far have not had. Parking ordinance, this has to do with an RV situation and how long it can be parked on the street. There's only one minor aspect of it, as I understand it, that is in question, and that needs to be just completed. And the same is true of the noise ordinance. So, these, these are the ones that can be done very, very shortly. The next category, if we can go up, that the mayor lists as high priority include code enforcement, temporary signs, business licenses, conflict of interest code. And conflict of interest code is merely a resolution adopting a code that is pretty standard. The other matters, code enforcement, public safety issues, we have identified some deficiencies in the city's ordinances that we need to fix to bring them up to speed so that we can, in fact, do the code enforcement in an effective and efficient way. Temporary signs has been an issue that, that has not been resolved. It will take a little bit of consideration as to what needs to be included in that. Business license ordinance has sort of grown beyond control, and we need to go back, perhaps take parts of it apart and bring it to you in segments rather than, I think, the, the whole picture that is kind of lying out there. It's currently a 90-page ordinance, for example, and I think some of it has been considered several times. Other parts have not been thought about at all. From a legal standpoint, I know I would personally like to reorganize it and streamline it and make it a little bit easier to deal with. Those are listed, I think, and staff would say as well, that those are high priorities. Medium priority, the home occupation aspect of zoning, loitering sexual offenders, and this is again, public safety, parolee probationer homes. These are more intense efforts on your part, but perhaps not of great urgency at this point. And low priority, the horse boarding, business license personnel rules, you have some that are functioning in place. However, in order to grow and really become a freestanding city, you're going to need some additional guidance and updating in that area. And then, the mayor has suggested canceling the internet cafe ordinance that has been sort of put together, and the wind energy ordinance that has been, well, wafting around, so to speak. So, so that's, that's, these are the issues. This is the priority that the mayor has set. If everybody likes this priority, well, we can just adopt that and move on. Or if you want some changes, please give us some discussion and let us know what, what you'd like us to do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Biggs, for that report. If I may, I would like to offer the council some rationale before they, before I take your comments, because I want to explain how I achieved this list. I simply, as I was reviewing the staff report for the council meeting, I asked the city attorney if it would be helpful, as the mayor, to at least have a jumping off point, if you will. And that's what this is. Going through the staff report, the first three ordinances that were listed on the first slide of low hanging fruit, those can be done with quickness. And then I simply said, okay, what are the public safety, and then what are the business ordinances? And just from my perspective, I kind of laid it out in this way. I don't have ownership of this list. We can manipulate it around however you want to do it. I just thought for the sake of time that it would go quicker and give better staff direction if I at least gave us a jumping off point for the purpose of our discussion. So, I wanted to share that with you. And Mr. Furman, you had your light on first. I'll take you, you up. You're up.
I want to refer back to 2011 there, when we actually have an ad hoc committee that reviews these ordinance, but it was Ms. Coonsy and I. And we met every six weeks with Julie Woodruff and sometimes Rob Johnson said in or the city manager. And every six weeks, we picked a couple of these ordinances, and we went over them and, and made suggestions back and forth. That ad hoc committee is actually still, I think legally in effect, it's just we lost Darcy, and I would suggest replacing Darcy with another person off the council and put this list in the ad hoc committee's hands and let them do the review like, like Darcy and I were doing over the last year and a half.
Year and a half is some meaningful words.
I know.
Mr. Edgerton?
Couple of points. First of all, an ad hoc committee is determined by the mayor. If you get a change in the mayor, then it's over. But he can, he can reappoint it, but that's-
Oh, okay. Then it was dissolved?
No, it doesn't dissolve. An ad hoc means for the moment, and a mayor has the option of appointing it or not appointing it. But in any event, I, I, I don't have any problem with the priority list that the mayor has come up with. I've looked at it, and basically, he's looking at that which can be addressed immediately and some of the things that are more pertinent and to the point. Just because the press is reading this, and I wouldn't want them to read it wrong, I talked to the mayor here on medium priority. You've got loitering sexual offenders, and it isn't that, first of all, I, I don't know, I wouldn't put it up, loitering sexual offenders with low hanging fruit. know, I wouldn't put it up, loitering sexual offenders with low-hanging fruit. But what I meant by that was that, that, that is his position of highest priority, and that's where you would ordinarily put it, but it appears that whatever we could do about that is already in place, and the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, he doesn't consider that issue as a low priority. It's just simply, it's already in place, and there's no sense putting it in any other part of the list. But I support what he's done, and I have reviewed it. It's up to everybody else.
Mr. Denver?
I don't agree with the ad hoc committee. I think we can do this right now. I would like to make, I would like you to understand my positions. To cancel the ordinances, I think, is, is accurate and correct. I think we're at, well, first off, I have a question. The priorities, Rob Johnson, what is, how many of these can we do in a short period of time? In other words, if we put them all as high priority, how practical is that?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I think it's probably a better question for the city attorney, as she will work through staff to get that back to council in a number of days, depending on ordinance and reporting requirements for noticing.
In, in terms of addressing that, the time constraint, we, one of the things that the report talks about is where these things are. Some of them have been drafted, and therefore can be finished, brought to the, to the council, and action can be taken. Others, we have samples from other jurisdictions, and the policy decisions haven't been made yet by the council. So those have to come back, and you need to think about them, is what it comes down to. What, what I can do, and what our office can do, is prepare for you what we think would work on some of these things where you haven't made decisions yet, and bring those to you for discussion and work, work through them with you. How long that will take depends on how much time you want to spend on each of them. The, the preliminary ones, where we're looking at minor changes to existing codes, that's relatively easy. The SEQA guidelines, the conflict code, those are easy things. They are cleanup matters. They are things that should have been done that weren't. We are continuing to find issues with some of the ordinances that have been adopted. Some are minor, some are inadvertent, some are just, they weren't done quite properly. So we're looking at cleaning up some of that. That's relatively easy because there's no policy change or policy direction needed. So it depends, is what the bottom line is. This is, of course, the famous words of lawyers, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, it sounds like talking to a lawyer. What, what I would like to propose then, because I don't understand what you said, but let me, high pri, high priority, I think ought to go down to between loitering and parolee probation home, probationer homes, as I understand that is, I understand what that is, but I'm not going to vote for loitering and the sex offenders being anything other than high priority. The home occupation business is also a problem in our community, and I can argue it both ways. I'd eliminate the whole concept of low priority and make everything else, of course, not with cancel ordinances, a medium priority, and go from there.
Okay.
Well, correction, point of order, if you wanted to put law, the loitering sexual offenders.
Why don't you speak into your microphone?
Point of order, the highest priority, as, as has been pointed and printed out as low hanging fruit.
I, I don't want to have anything called low priority. I think loy, the, the sex offenders is something, if I had my way, we'd work on them all, drop the canceling ordinances, and they'd all be high. I'm not quite sure, but I think you said we can't do that. I have no idea. But I, and if we can't do that, I'd argue then that between loitering and the parolee probationers, we'd put it in right there, eliminate the concept, low priority, of course, do the low-hanging fruit first. I have no question with that. But we have hired an extra person. This is the kind of thing that the, the city wants us to get done. This is the whole 25 or 50% of the point of us being here. Let's get at it. Let's get it done. Let's do it all this year.
Okay, comments are noted. Before I call upon Mr. August and Mr. Furman again, I want, it's, at this juncture, I need to clarify, I think it's important for us to clarify. We're not saying that any of these things are higher in priority in terms of their legal necessity, the fact that we have to have it done. It's merely a way of ranking, and the, it's really a priority of work. It's a priority for the city attorney to bring them back to the city council for a policy decision or for adoption into the municipal code. So it's not, don't, we don't, we can't get hung up on high, medium, or low in the context of what these nomenclatures are, which is a good point that Deputy Mayor made for the purpose of the press. This is nothing more than a way to rank these ordinances in terms of the city attorney's bringing them back to us. So wanted to make that clarification at this point.
On, on that note, we will move as quickly as possible to get them all to you. Okay? I, that, that, I did not mean to suggest that, well, we'll do one, and that'll take six months, and we'll come back again. We will be working on all of these if that is what you direct us to do. And we will bring them back as we complete them, and we get them to the point where we think that they're ready for your consideration. The, what I was trying to say is that the, any holdup in terms of getting it done may come from the considerations that you need to bring to us to shape what we bring to you. So it's an interactive process. Those meetings must be, of course, scheduled and take place in public. It takes time to discuss these things, so there are limitations on how many can be done at any meeting. And we can bring you six at the, well, no, we can't bring you six at the next one, but we could bring you probably three. And certainly with the ones that are nearing completion, that probably will work. Maybe two at a time at the other ones is, is workable in terms of your ability to look at it, and our ability then to incorporate what you want us to do. So, but if you're, what, what you were saying, and I guess what I was concerned about, is that there are so many of these, the question was, do you really want us to move forward on all of them? We've solved that there are two that you don't want us to move forward on. So we'll, we'll go forward with the rest and bring it to you as we get them complete.
Mr. August?
I just was going to make the point that I do agree with Mr. Denver, and I agree with you, Mr. Man. Obviously, we can't do them all at the same time, so they have to be done in, in, in order. So I understand Mr. Denver's point, and I also under your, your point, that high priority and so on, so it doesn't put one above the other or something like that, but we obviously can't do them all at the same time, so we have to do one first and the second one second. So I would say that perhaps I'm very, very satisfied with the order that you have these things in, but we might want to take out medium, high, or low priority, and that would satisfy Mr. Denver. I would agree with that.
Mr. Furman?
I, I don't understand, and I, you don't seem to be getting the point, the committee that was formed two years ago, you have two people working on these ordinances for free, and you're telling me you want to pay a city attorney to go over them? I, I don't think that's a good idea until the decision's made by the ad hoc committee. Also, the, you were asking the length of the ordinance, John. Some of the ordinances we've gone over have 24 subsections, and they're six pages long on 24 different stipulations in each ordinance. Now, do you want to really sit here and discuss 24 stipulation on each ordinances? Or do you want to have a committee go through them, and ones they agree with, then turn it over to Julie Biggs for, for final preparation for the council?
Since you asked me a question, let's do them all right here.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Edgerton?
You're opening a can of worms.
Again, I, I support what the mayor said. I, I'm, I'm sympathetic to what Councilman Denver said as well. This, these are really not listed, Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, by importance, but rather by pragmatics as to the ability to get to these items and get something accomplished, which is why you'd call the first one low-hanging fruit. As far as the last one, instead of saying cancel ordinances, maybe we could just reward it to say not at this time. Again, we're not talking about its importance, we're talking about the pragmatism of approaching these particular ordinances at this time.
Yeah, those are good additional comments, and so, first of all, let me just, I have no intention of reinstating the ad hoc committee for ordinance review. The, what I'd like to ask you, Mr. Denver, is, first of all, the, the two that you wanted to move up to, for the city attorney to attack first, one of the reasons why I put them in that category, in terms of in the, kind of in the middle of the list, is because of the, because of the city attorney's staff report. There is, I believe there's a, a law that was just recently enacted, that we need to assess the impact of that in crafting the ordinance, and so that's one of the reasons why I kind of put it towards the middle. It's going to ta, take a lot more work to get it there. But that's not to say I'm perfectly willing, and then maybe we should go ahead and move those up to the, up to the list so that you can start working on those earlier. But that's kind of the reason why I put those in the order that I did. Would you like them higher up on the list?
You know what I really like? Let's eliminate the words high priority, medium priority, low priority, and let's say, let's do these things in, in as close as you can come to this order and as fast as you can. Drop the two at the bottom.
All right. Is there any objection to doing what Mr. Denver just suggested? All right, silence is consent. Do you need a formal motion and a vote on this, or do we just have unanimous? Apparently, we have the consent of the council to proceed.
Consent is fine on this.
This order.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very well. It is ordered as presented then, eliminating the high, medium, and low statements and taking them reasonably in that order.
Okay.
All right, next is city manager reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a couple items tonight verbally. I don't have a, a slide presentation for you. We are moving quickly along on the March 5th Bio-Solid Update Workshop to council. We anticipate that at 4:00 here on the 5th, and we anticipate a, a good staff presentation and update on some changes to our development application process and, and some feedback from the public. A few weeks ago, there was some questions about a Pinto Ranch that was on the southeast borderline of, of Menifee, and I, I asked Alan Yun, our administrative analyst, to look into it and found out that county staff's working on a solution with two appointed community liaisons, one of them being one of our former trail commissioners, Rick Crowe, and a Roger Van Oustendrop. I hope I said that right. They were picked in initial community meeting on January 26th, so we have some, some insiders and some friends working on this for the local area. If you, if you remember, the county was thinking of closing the ranch and putting some cows out to pasture there to eat, and it wasn't conducive to horse riding. Mr. Crowe and Mr., and I'm going to get it, Van Oustendrop are, are working with the county to, to come up with a solution. I understand that some really discussions are loaded to options on how to have the cattle perform vegetation control and still have horses ride for a long, and trying to identify a long-term solution. So we're going to be getting in touch with Mr. Crowe, and I will bring a full update back at our next council meeting. Finally, March 19th, currently, if it be the council's desire, we're working on a public works department update and workshop, which would prepare you for an impending possible CIP program in the fut, near future. But we just wanted to update you on all the projects that we have going on right now on our roadways that are easing traffic congestion and some other things that are coming down, down the road. So we just wanted to kind of prepare you for that, ask some, provide some information, get some good feedback, make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward with our department. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Future agenda requests from the council? Mr. Denver?
I'd like to request a report on self-certification of our fu, future housing elements, and could the city attorney be able to report back to us in the next couple of meetings? And I have one other.
Sure, we'd like to.
We need a, we need a second on that?
I'll second it.
You have it?
Yeah.
Okay, then, Mr. Denver, you still have the floor?
I do. This, this next one is not, I don't know if I need a, I'd like to discuss this. I don't know if this needs to be a policy or whether we just need to discuss this now or at a future date. We have a whole bunch of events that are happening in our town. We have a bunch of events, these training sessions, WR COG training sessions for our, our planning commissioners and for ourselves. We have ICSC things where a few of us, whoever has time ought, ought go, at minimum, the city ought to go, and try and gather some people to work on bringing businesses to our town. And I think we need more of our city council to do those things, one. Two, when I was on the Parish Union High School District Board of Trustees, this is not the issue I wish to speak, but it'll show the point, we, we weren't allowed to have credit cards for all the bill reasons. And when a young woman who was a single mom came aboard, she didn't go to anything and didn't say a word. And the reason is because she couldn't afford to even put the money out of her pocket to pay for the activities and then come back and bill it. She simply couldn't. Broke into tears one day and said, you know, can I have a credit card, city credit card? I'll give you, and so we all sort of, because those rich, white, fat guys just didn't even care about it. We'd pay for it and go on. In the last elections, rightly or wrongly, we have been kind of battered for spending city money on things that in large degree were requirements, should be requirements of city council people to do. I think we need to have either a policy or a discussion that we should be taking care of city business, and we should in some form or fashion, especially in our own districts, especially as to economic activities to bring businesses to Menifee, we should all agree that that's what we should do. And I don't know how to say anything other than that.
Did I hear you say, to use your, you had, I gleaned three different possible topics out of that summation. Number one, you know, a review of the credit card, city credit card policy, perhaps. Number two, perhaps a future funding discussion at the budget workshop for council district specifics, and then maybe more involvement by the council in the economic development process?
Right.
Those, did I capture it?
You did, and, and, and to add to the economic development, there's other things too, but it's, it's economic development centric plus a few things. WR COG is that economic centric, but I think we'd all agree, that was really well, time well-spent and money well-spent, and I, I don't know anyone who would disagree. So I think we need to have at some point a discussion, break that down. I, I like your breakdown, as long as you get a little wider on it, and it sounds all right to me.
Okay, wow. Let me, let me, let me try to, let me try to, so, so that we don't overwhelm staff with too many agendas and have a nice pro, work product or workflow, perhaps we should, I would second a review of the city's credit card policy first, if that's what you were asking for.
It, it actually wasn't, except that, that wouldn't break my heart, except that I think our current policy, give us cards, make, demand receipts, and then take them the heck away from us as we walk in the door, isn't all bad.
All right, well, maybe instead of asking for a second on those three things in the broader scope of it, Mr. Johnson, did you capture enough of Mr. Denver in order to bring this back at future city manager reports?
I would be happy if Mr. Denver got a second on that to meet with him and understand a little bit more about what he's.
I'll second that.
We do have a travel policy that we can review, but I, I think he's looking for more than that, and I'd be happy to meet with him on it.
Is that, is that adequate?
I'm, I'm happy as a lawyer.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Furman?
I'm going to make a little quote from Mr. Edgerton that I read in a paper that was quite nice. "We had money in our hot hands, and we are ready to spend it." I like that idea, okay? What I'm proposing is, I think our hard-working planning commissioners might need a review and a raise. If we could probably query other cities of our size to see what their planning commissioners are getting paid, I would like to make necessary adjustments to be fair with them.
So would it be, would it be your recommendation, Mr. Furman, to consider that potential increase as part of the budgetary process?
If that's what it takes, that's what we want to do.
It may be easier on staff. If, if that's the case, would there, would anybody like to second that as a review? Not, we're not voting on it tonight, we're considering Mr. Furman's agenda item.
Can, can I ask a question of, of the councilman? Does that include the concept of not increasing the pay but increasing the Does that include the concept of not increasing the pay but increasing the amount of work? In other words, instead of one meeting a month, do two? Or three? Or four?
Well, they do two and they need more work.
Or four. In other words, instead of raising their, their, instead of raising the minimum amount of money we pay, we just get more work out of them. I think maybe that ought to be...
Yeah, well, I'd like to get more work and more pay.
All right, well, we can't discuss it any further than we already are. Before I call upon Mr. Edgerton, city attorney, did you have something to add related?
Just that this will take an ordinance change. It's, it's a simple thing, but it will take an ordinance.
Right, understood, understood. So, staff, do you have what you need for that particular topic?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Edgerton?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points. One, in reference to Councilman Furman's gracious reference to my comment about we have money to spend, I want it known that that was in that article specifically toward CEOs, that that's the head, that's the brains of an organization and any corporation or whatever, when you're looking at spinning priorities, that's not where you want to pinch pennies with the, with the top person. And, and I listened to Councilman Denver in, in reference to a discussion matter, which I agree with him on. I just noticed on economic development, I certainly was in agreement that council involvement is really important, but we might want to think about using the word requirement. It's probably, as an elected official, would be voluntary, but still the policy of the council, as I think Councilman Denver rightly pointed out, that's part of our responsibility to be as involved as we can be.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. I'll tell you, listening to these requests tonight, it's almost, these, some of these things almost might be best served if we schedule another goal-setting session, Mr. Johnson. And I know that in a discussion I had with Mr. Denver a few weeks back, he, he's, he believes that it's probably time that we do that. But I'm not asking for that as an agenda item, I'm merely suggesting that we may want to do that in the near future. As far as, I've got two things that I would like to share. As part of bringing things back at some point, and being sensitive to Mr. Furman's desire to keep the ad hoc committee for ordinances open, which I, again, I don't plan on doing it at this juncture, but it begs the question, I think there's probably some committees that we may want to do in the future. And I think that perhaps between Mr. Johnson and Mr. Nelson, that this could be something that we could get the, get him working on right away and bring back in the near future a staff report on recommended council committees from the staff. And so, if, if I can get a second on that for a future agenda item, I'd appreciate it.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Edgerton. And also, in closing for me, I received a letter from Supervisor Marion Ashley. This is in reference to the Paris Menifee Valley Aquatic Center. The, with, with redevelopment going away, it left a funding shortfall in some capital funding for the aquatic center in terms of some furniture inside and, and outdoor equipment for surrounding the pool deck and things of that nature. And what the supervisor has asked the city of Menifee staff to do is to research what happened with some of the pass-through funding from the county when the aquatic center was scheduled to go over here at the corner. There was some funds set aside and fenced for that specific purpose. If that money is available, if we did indeed receive that as pass-through dollars, he would ask us to consider sending that back to the county for the purpose of funding some of this outdoor equipment or furniture, or going in, because it's the Paris Menifee Valley Aquatic Center, perhaps contribute some sort of Menifee dollars to purchasing some of that outdoor furniture. So, that's the request. Is that clear enough in terms of what he's asking for?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did see that letter and I made a notation to speak with our finance director on that.
Okay.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, very good.
With the comments that, that's exactly what that is, is the Paris Menifee Aquatic Center, it's as much as our, it's as much ours as it is Paris, as with the, that one in particular. And it is state of the art. I promise you that when it gets up and open, Menifee kids will be four-fifths of all the kids over there. You're going to be able to surf right here in 50 feet out of Menifee on waves with, it's going to be something. And so, I certainly think we ought to help with that because it was envisioned to be set right between the two cities and it couldn't have been set any closer than it was between the two cities. That was the intent.
Thank you, Mr. Denver.
You still have your surfboard, John?
I do. I meant to get a bigger one.
Are there any other agenda requests from council? Staff, do you have clarity? All right, then this meeting is adjourned.